I call this meeting to order. We'll have this pledge to the flag.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is Town of Waldeboro, Maine, special town meeting warrant Tuesday, March 26, 2019. To John F. Lash, a constable for the Town of Waldeboro in the County of Lincoln, State of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the voters of Waldeboro, Maine, in said county, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet at the Waldeboro Municipal Building in said town on Tuesday, the 26th day of March, A.D., 2019, at 6:00 in the evening, then and there, to act on the following articles. Article 1 is to choose a moderator at said meeting. I now declare this special town meeting for March 26, 2019, open. To choose a moderator at, to preside at said meeting, the floor is now open to hear nominations for moderator.
I nominate Paul Smeltzer.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that Paul Smeltzer be elected moderator. Do I hear any other nominations? Do I have a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Second.
I now declare nominations are closed, da-da-da, and that Paul Smeltzer is, I now declare nominations are closed, and that Paul Smeltzer is duly declared moderator for this meeting. Would Paul Smeltzer come forward and receive the oath?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The rules for the evening that we'll be following come from the Maine Municipal Association. They are the Maine moderator rules that were set in place in 1989. These are the rules that we've used here in town as long as I've been here, so they're the ones we're going to follow tonight. Any questions or comments as we get going? Everything will be directed through me, and then I will dispose of them in the appropriate place. Okay? Any questions before we get started? All right. Article 2 shall an ordinance entitled Moratorium Ordinance Regarding Medical Marijuana Dispensaries and Cultivation Facilities be enacted. A copy of the proposed ordinance is posted with this warrant and is on file at the office of the town clerk for public inspection. Do we have a motion?
I move. I move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article 2? John?
Good evening, all. I'm here to speak and vote no on the medical marijuana moratorium. Why? The language in the document must be changed to cover the new medical marijuana rules under MRS 22, sub-paragraph 2429D dated in December 2018. The current moratorium document which we are voting on only covers the language for dispensary and cultivation facilities without including the new registered caregiver. Within page 3 of the moratorium document, there are two paragraphs. One is application and purpose, and the other is provision. In there, there is no mention of the registered caregiver, which is a new, relatively new to be understood category that can be governed by the town. The state had added this regulation, as called registered caregiver, to be, to allow home rule for towns under sub-paragraph 2429D, local regulation. We must consider this to be part of the medical marijuana town ordinance by making it a part of the moratorium. But I mean by consider to have it written into the potential new ordinance during the moratorium. As an example, we could do our own regulations for distance from a school. Once language is developed for an ordinance during the moratorium, we will be able to have a town warrant for a vote and regulate registered caregivers under this new state law. Without going through making this change in our moratorium document, the registered caregivers remain unregulated. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Hi, my name is Marcia Smolyn, and I have read the moratorium, and I've read a lot of the new medical marijuana amendments and the old medical marijuana law. And I'm in agreement. The, I think the moratorium document is not complete and needs to be changed to include registered caregivers. And I think that I would like to vote no because this document needs to be changed and then re-voted on in the near future.
I saw another hand. Yes, sir?
May we make a motion?
Can you please stand? I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Mike Fair. May we make a motion to defer the vote tonight until this issue has been addressed?
My recommendation would be that we vote it down tonight so that it is clean and dealt with, and then it could go back to the board.
If that's the case, then does the existing moratorium end?
We have no moratorium.
There is no moratorium.
This is putting a moratorium in to stop.
Well, we voted perhaps six months ago, some time ago. I thought that established a moratorium, or was that just a recommendation to study a moratorium?
That was null and void because we didn't have an open town meeting on it to vote on it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, no, no.
Yes, yes, yes.
You're getting confused, everybody. Knocked out. You're referring to the retail. You had a, there was a retail moratorium, and then you voted on recreational at the town meeting in June.
And then in January, we voted again for a medical marijuana moratorium.
The select board.
The select board did. That's what this is.
And this is the follow-up to that.
But we were supposed to do that back, we were supposed to do this back in January, and we didn't. That's why we have to do this today, to make it legal.
Right. But.
We're okay time-wise, I think.
It's good for 180 days from today.
From today, yeah.
Back in January, it was null and void because we didn't have an open town meeting for the people to vote on it. It has to go to the people for a vote.
But that's why we're here tonight.
But it's been since January.
The answer to your question is there is no current moratorium in place based upon the medical portion of it.
Okay, well, what I'm getting at is trying to find a mechanism where a moratorium is extended tonight, but we get a commitment to address the issue that was raised earlier.
The issue is going to be is that this, we cannot amend an ordinance on the floor. So that you can put a mor, this moratorium in place or not in place. Those are our two options this evening. Okay. I believe gentleman in the back.
Just actually, in January of 2018, the town had a moratorium vote at the Miller School on recreational marijuana. In June of 18, the town voted to actually add certain elements of recreational marijuana given a lot at times. This is on medical marijuana, which is entirely different. If the meeting today does not accept this recommendation and vote for this moratorium, that means the town has potential exposure to a dispensary under existing land use law in this municipality, which would mean that a party could apply to the planning board and to the town to have a medical marijuana dispensary and an associated cultivation facility in the commercial zone A on Route 1. The purpose of this meeting is to eliminate that ambiguity where the state passed an opt-in, but because we had protected ourselves correctly before the December 13 application of the medical marijuana law with this land use ordinance, it now creates a legal ambiguity, an opening potentially for a dispensary to come to town. There is no more time to wait to stop that ambiguity. The point made here, which may be, which is valid, should then allow us to move forward with a new moratorium that covers the issues that were raised. But there's no reason in trying to cover those issues to really allow them one more day of exposure to this town for a medical marijuana dispensary on Route 1 in Commercial O in Zone A. And that was the purpose of this moratorium, which was expertly drafted and is correct. And if it's defeated tonight, it exposes the town to something that I don't believe that anybody was here would really want to expose the town to.
Bruce Metrick from Waldeboro. I want to follow these two past speakers' lead and say, and ask a question to the board. Is it possible to vote on this yes, or is it possible to get an up and down vote? And if it's voted yes to put the moratorium in, then how long would it take to get these folks' proposed amendments back out for revision to the moratorium? Is that weeks, days, months, years?
Well, I, the board would have to sign a warrant. We'd have to have a moratorium drafted, which would be probably pretty quick for the board to deem. So like at your next meeting, you could do that, set up a date for a town meeting. So within less than a month, probably, it could all happen.
And it would be just for that issue?
It would just, if the issue is lacking around this caregiver issue, then yes, it would, you know, so this is, this is doing one job. If we need another job done, it would be a second moratorium.
So if I'm allowed, that just sounds like a good compromise. Thank you.
Any other comment?
There's one up there.
Mr. Williams.
What do we do about the three businesses that are already operating as medical marijuana?
It's grandfathered. It's all grandfathered. It's all in place. It's all grandfathered.
So we're going to allow them three, but we're not going to allow any more?
That's what we're hoping.
That's not the business at all.
Other questions or comments?
Please, discussion, vote.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's been moved and seconded that we cease debate and that we move to the vote. If you vote in favor of this, then we'll vote on to the article. If you vote it down, that means discussion will continue. Is that clear?
All right. Mr. Chair. Sorry. May I just point out that we do have some people who would like to speak to the issue and have not spoken yet.
So if we vote it down, then they'll be able to speak. If it's voted in the positive, then debate ceases. Okay? All those in favor of ceasing debate, please signify by raising your orange cards. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay? The question passes. We will cease debate. We will now move for the vote on Article 2. Article 2 says, "Shall an ordinance entitled Moratorium Ordinance Regarding Medical Marijuana Dispensaries and Cultivation Facilities be enacted?" All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by raising your orange cards. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Article 2 passes. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjourning this special meeting, please signify by raising your orange cards. Thank you. Those opposed?
Now, everybody, don't leave. We never have this many people, and tonight, we're having a discussion about a tax incremental financing zone in Waldeboro, and it might be worth staying if you want to learn about it. I mean, you can leave and go do fun things, or you could stay and listen to Max and Bill because I'm sure the select board will move that up right to now so that, so that you can stay and listen to it.
Right now, I will move, we move 10.2 up to the beginning of the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's been moved up to the beginning of the meeting.
And not everybody's leaving, so that's good.
Very interesting stuff.
Bill, Max, come forward quickly before people leave. For those of you who don't know, this is Bill Napower and Max Johnston, and he's our town planner. They're, well, they're kind of both our town planner, but they're.
Max is the forward person.
Max is the, the one that you will see in the office.
There's two things. One is the select board has a copy of the warrant article in front of them, and before I talk about the TIF in general, I just wanted to alert you that the language is kind of a truce, but it's something, we have to put it in that particular.
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, yeah. All right. Thank you.
It's not, it, it just goes into the, it goes on the video. It's not a, a microphone to hear.
I'll speak up.
It's hard to hear.
All right. I'll, I'll think I'm talking to my grandchildren, so I'll speak loud, yeah. So I just wanted to alert the board that that warrant article was written to a particular standard, so that, that would be the warrant, and it has, that's how it has to appear on that, so it has a couple of parts. I'll just talk very briefly to give an overview of what the TIF is, and then can we leave it open for questions or whatever? And I will be brief, but let me just get my notes here on that. Basically, what a TIF is, is an economic development tool that's allowed under, you know, Maine state law. And what it does is that it captures new property taxes for certain properties in the town. And how it works is basically, we create a TIF zone, which is a certain geographic area. We're limited to no more than 2% of the area acres in the community, so it's not terribly large. And the, the goal is, and what we tried to do in this TIF proposal, is to pick parcels predominantly along the Route 1 in commercial industrial district. We picked the area where the existing industrial park is in, off 32, and then we included some areas in the village that had some development potential, and our two marine park areas or wharf areas on Pine Street and also on Dutchneck on that. And we'll explain why in a minute. So on those parcels that we picked, what would happen is simply this, is that the valuation for those parcels are, we call it, they're, they're kind of frozen as of April 1st, 2019. So the, the taxes that are assessed on that value will continue to go into the general fund. For an example, we have a parcel valued at, say, $100,000, and let's say they pay $2,000 a year. Well, that will continue to go in the general fund. But if someone builds a, a new business there or a factory there, that new valuation, instead of going into the general fund, goes in what's called the TIF account. It's basically a place to put that, that tax money, and the town has the ability to use those funds for future economic development. Now, how we use it has to be identified in our TIF plan. So it, it can only be economic development, but the state allows us a pretty broad arena for economic development. But it can only be allowed for those projects we identify. Now, the TIF is supposed to go for 30 years. Now, I don't know about you, but I have difficulty figuring out what's going to happen tomorrow, nonetheless, 30 years. So we, we brought, we wrote some of the projects pretty broadly to cover things, you know, for the, for the future. So what would happen is, let's say, the TIF account grows to a certain amount, and the town and the economic committee decide, all right, this is one of those project, there's a project we want to pursue. What do we do next? Well, you know, they come and talk to the selectmen, they plan it out, and then when it's ready to start looking for funding, they have to go back to the select board, get it on the warrant for a town meeting, and you, the voters, have to approve it at their, at their regular town meeting. So even though that money is put in that account, and even though we have some projects identified, actually spending it requires your, your approval. And we also have to plan those out because we're just putting ideas in the plan right now. There's a lot of work that has to get done. There's a, John, you're on the economic development, we're going to put you to work on pulling some of those things together, but there is a lot of work to do on that. Now, the TIF also has a couple of advantages that I want to talk about. I know I'm going through this kind of briefly, but I want to hit some of the highlights. This, the advantage of having that money in a TIF account is tremendous because it gives the town the opportunity to actually use those funds to, for an economic development project, and the most and the best thing is that it lets us leverage funds. I'll, I'll give you an example. I don't want, well, you give a planner an audience, and they're going to go on forever, but, but let me just, I'll give you, and this is a good example. Right here in Rockland, they, they wanted to rebuild their fish pier, which is a, you know, quite a significant, you know, piece of infrastructure for the fishery throughout the state. So what we did is we started out with $200,000 that the town of Rockland had, and then we used that $200,000 to get a grant of $350,000 from Northern Border and another grant from the Maine Department of Transportation. That gave us about $800,000, and then we used that $800,000 to get a grant from the Department of Commerce, so we have a total of about 100, $1.6 million. And it all started from that $200,000 that the town had. So that's the, that's the power of these TIFs, is that it gives, the town has that, you know, in its toolkit to use for some of these projects. And, and the idea is, is that we try to get as much funding as possible. Now, the funding could be not just other grants, it could be private foundations, it could be companies. We would look wherever we can to get, you know, more money into the project on that. The other thing that the TIF does is that the state uses our valuation as the basis for how they distribute money to us in a couple of different ways. One is revenue sharing. Now, we all know that very affluent communities, like some along the peninsulas and Georgetown and, and whatever, get very little in revenue sharing funds because their valuations of many of their homes are very expensive. Well, the same thing happens here in Waldeboro. If something is built, it adds value, and as our valuation goes up, the state doesn't give us as much revenue sharing. But the TIF funds, we, those monies are kind of set aside, and they're not included in how the state does it. So we actually, you know, get to save some money. Instead of that, losing that, we get to keep that. The same holds true for education aid. Some, the state itself distributes, there's a complicated formula, but a portion of that is the value of the town on that there. So instead of losing some of that money, the TIF allows that value to kind of just stay here, and Waldeboro would get, you know, continue to get a better share. Now, of course, that goes to the school district. Now, the other thing that it impacts is our county tax is, is calculated in part by the valuation of the town. So since our, the TIF is holding some of that money aside, Waldeboro won't be dinged by paying a, a high county tax. That's kind of like the sprinkles on an ice cream cone. It's an extra thing. But the, the primary purpose of the TIF is to allow the town to address economic development projects, and it gives them a pot, pool of money to use those funds, and most importantly, and that's how most of the TIFs are used, is that it, it allows us to leverage, you know, funds. I have one more thing to say, and then I'll leave it open for questions on that. And that is, is that the, the projects that we decided to use are what we broadly call public infrastructure. So it could be roads, bridges, power lines, it could be sidewalks, some road improvements at times. The, the state law allows us to use it for trails as long as we can make a connection to tourism, and, and along the river and the village, you know, that there's a perfect synergy there. So we have some broad use. And also, I mentioned the, the two, the Pine Street Landing and the Dutchneck. That's important because those are areas we can potentially use to aid additional access for fishermen or aquaculture or things like that. And not only those areas, but if we have another area along the river or along, that we could potentially use to allow some expansion of aquaculture, greater access for fishery, we can, we can use the TIF for that on that. But the one thing we're not going to use the TIF for, and this is important to note, it's called a credit enhancement, fancy word for giving part of that tax money back directly into the company, and we're not using it for that. So we're using it just for the things that, the projects that we identify that have a kind of a public good, you know, on that. Now, some of them are basically, depending on where they are, we put a new sewer line in. It's obviously going to benefit the people along that road or that business that would benefit, and not the entire community, but, you know, some, some projects may, because we could use it for high-speed fiber or things like that, you know, on that. So that's about the tip. Max, did I miss anything?
I think you got it all.
All right. Any questions? Yeah, or just?
Maybe you can help me understand, to use your example of the $100,000 property, $2,000 taxes. So you're going to take that, at some point, those $2,000, put it into the TIF fund?
Well, it's the other way around. The original $2,000 goes where it always has been, into the general fund. It's only when something new happens there that that new valuation will go in the TIF.
Understood. So, so when they go in to put a new dollar store there? Where's that tax money going to come from that used to come from that property?
Well, it, well.
Am I misreading?
Yeah. No, no, you're right. What happens is, is that we look at the property and say, say it was just raw land. Well, that valuation, whatever it was, goes where it always has. So the assessor has to do, like almost, he has to make two calculations, and one would always go to the regular general fund, and it would just be the new value for that, say, that new dollar store. That would go into the TIF fund, and that would be up to the assessor to do. Does that answer? Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, you know, this requires a lot of behind-the-scenes things, but there's some software that they use that can, that can handle it. Excuse me, there was just one.
To follow up a little on him, how long with them properties are they going to be froze for?
Well, the, the TIF, the life of the TIF we're proposing is 30 years.
So the value of that property never changes for 30 years?
No, no, the va, no, the original value would always go into the general fund. It's just if something new happens there that it goes into the TIF. They're not, those properties, say you have raw land, and every year, you know, you go up like half a percent or something like that, that would still go into the general fund. It would only be if I built something on that lot, that that building, that new value goes into the TIF.
But he's asking, does it, but does, as taxes go up?
Yeah.
Does it still go up on that value of the building?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just like, it's just like anything else, you know, the value.
Taking that money out of the tax base if you're putting it in the TIF fund?
Well, we're.
The property that you're going to take that tax dollar and put it in the TIF fund. So what happens to the rest of us? Are we going to pick up that difference?
No, the only difference is, is that the, the money that goes into the TIF fund gets earmarked for projects.
I know that, but it's not going back into the.
No, it's not going into the general fund. It's good. It's segregated out, yeah. We'll come back on that, but...
Two comments I want to make. I've been involved in this kind of stuff throughout the state for the work I do, and towns that have done this, it's a good deal for them, okay? They like it. But I'm going to give you an example of why this got enacted by the state. So up north, years and years and years ago, they started putting big wind farms in. Those wind farms are 30, 40, 50, 60, 100 million dollars. So all of a sudden, the town's valuation goes up, and yay, we have all this tax money and coming in. Then the town, then the state comes, does a revaluation of your whole, of your whole, that was the point you made earlier, of your whole area. And they say, well, we have all this tax revenue coming in, so we're going to cut, we're going to cut your, the money you get back from the state. And they went, whoa, well, now we're in the hole. So they created these TIFs for when large projects come in. It's a way to shield the town from losing that state impound share. You have to also go back to the point the gentleman made is, is if you read the TIF, you read the rules, it's limited to 2% and not any more than, it's 2% and not any more than a certain amount of acreage ever in the town that could be set aside. So what happens is, is you're getting revenues in, that the town gets to decide where they go, while never having to worry about getting a reduction for those large projects or large things that come in. So I'm not, the best way I can explain it is anecdotes, and, but I've never seen a town that thought it was a bad idea when they did it. I mean, that's, there's nothing in it for me, but I've just, that's been the experience. But again, go back to why they did it, because it's huge imbalance.
We just need to clarify something that you said, is that we're not fortunate enough to have, like, a big outside development. When the gas lines went in, in some towns, that, you know, that increased their assessment, and they were to make, they were able to create a TIF district and take that income, or the CMP increases something, or windmills, or something like that. We don't have that situation. So we're relying on things to occur over time within our commercial areas. With that said, it's going to take time for this to grow. I mean, it's not something that automatically is going to happen, you know, this is, we probably may not have that fund seeded much in the first five years. So this is something long-term. But think of this, if we had this in place five years ago, 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, you know, along Route 1 and some of the other things that have gone in, we would have had money to do more economic development. So it's one of those things, you start it now, you take advantage later. John, you had something?
Yes, I'm interested in further clarifying the portion of the discussion here about a property that has a value, it's on the TIF, and then the new value is over and above, but the basic value, which was in place, if the mill rate goes up, the basic value of that property floats with the mill rate. So there's, it doesn't reduce the tax base, is what I'm...
No, that, no, it would go to the same, yeah.
Yes, it keeps going with it.
Yeah.
Based on the value of the property before the TIF were applied to the...
Yeah.
Yeah, in Rockland, though, 10 years ago, when I was on a committee here for the village, of possibly doing a TIF in this village, I remember what they did in Rockland when they had a TIF, is they actually took some of the money that they had from the TIF and sent it aside to encourage development where the town was going to participate in the company that was coming in, to help them improve the property, to get them to come in and take the spot. Is that still a legal thing to do?
You could, but the thing we, you have to remember, we're limiting ours to the public improvement. So we can't do, we can't do work on their property, but we can go up to it. Say that company who might move in needs a sewer, well, we can go and put it, you know, on our Republic Road, and dead-end it at their property, and then they would have to do the rest. To do what you said, we'd have to get involved in that credit enhancement, you know, thing to go on their land. But we don't really have to do that, because if we do our share, we can try to find funds working with that company to do it on their own. Are there any other questions? Or have I baffled everybody completely?
Yeah, I just have a nuts-and-bolts type question.
Sure.
For the projects selected, is there a citizens' initiative process, or does the board nominate them? How does that work?
Yeah, we, if you go online, you can look at the projects that we've identified. And there are, you know, Schmuggler's Board of Things, so go online and take a look. That can always be amended. And again, like I said, we were looking broad strokes for things, so a lot of our ideas are pretty generic, for the most part. But when we identify a project, we have like three separate categories. One is, is projects that would benefit the locale of the geographic areas that we've identified in the TIF. And then the second category is, is projects that are not in the geographic area, but lead to it. For instance, if we wanted to put a sewer somewhere and had to go, you know, and we had to get there, that would cover that. And then the third category is probably for the town, I think probably one of the most valuable, the community-wide. So there's a lot of things in there that we could do. The basic provision in the community-wide one, we've identified one, but we've also used some language to say, any project that is allowed for the state statute can go here. So that gives us a lot of wiggle room. To answer your question further, to refine the project, that's something we do after. That's where the public process really gets down to the nuts and bolts. And more than likely, in Waldeboro, your Economic Development Committee might probably first hit the ground running and get, you know, and start to, you know, pick a project, they'll come to the select board, they'll give their yea or nay, and then the public gets really involved, you know. Does that answer somewhat?
Is there a citizens' initiative process?
Do you get to vote on it at a town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
To initiate it, start.
Put a project.
Does he have a project?
Well, no, if you have a great idea for public infrastructure, or something that's going to contribute to economic growth in Waldeboro, you go to our town planner and talk to him. And he identifies what you're saying, and say, whoa, that's a great idea, let's take it to EDC, and you go with him and talk.
Yeah, okay.
It's an all-inclusive process, nobody's being excluded from anything.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I just wanted to know what the process was.
It's as flexible as we want to make it.
The first thing we would look to see, is what you're suggesting already allowed? And if it is, you just need to advocate for it and get, you know, people interested. If it isn't, and we can always amend the TIF, you know, it can always be changed on that there. So if we could add things, we could take properties off, put other properties on, we're still limited to the caps.
One other comment, people have mentioned this credit enhancement agreement, and I mentioned projects throughout the state. Let's, I'll make up a story. Let's say Jackson Labs, I picked that out of the blue, comes in, they're looking for to put a lab, an expansion in the mid-coast somewhere, okay? And it's huge, it's $100 million, or $200 million. They're going to look for one of the towns to enter into one of these, they call them credit enhancements. And it's basically saying, we're going to put $100 million in your town, and you're going to, you're going to be able to get all that, all that, all that tax revenue from it. We need a little bit of that back to do the development. And so this is done all over the state, and it becomes a little bit of a, you know, they're looking for an incentive to land in your town. And so you go on credit enhancement agreements, and you'll see they're done all over the state by town. But it's town by town, you're allowed to do it by the state. You need to have a TIF system in place in order to do that. But again, you know, you'd know about that well in advance, that, you know, I don't know what would come to town, but like you said, 30 years from now, who knows? And they would ask for that, or they'd say, well, that's fine, you don't want to do that, we'll go over to them for this thing. So that's just...
Yeah, just so you know, we didn't, after discussion of the committee, we felt that that was not an idea that right now would go well, you know, with the town, so we didn't include it on that. And our philosophy was, in a situation like that, we'll find another way to create incentives, but not using the town, you know, taxed. Select board, any questions? You've heard this before.
We've heard it.
Yeah.
You've convinced us, I think. I think you've convinced us. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but...
Yeah, the other thing I'll say, you know, I mean, I'm not a resident of Waldeboro, but it's a good thing to have, because it can be used to move the town forward. And as this gentleman said, if the projects meet the test of, you know, what the public wants, then it's, that's an extra benefit. And we're going to need your, there'll probably be a TIF committee too, depending on the project. You know, as we get a project going, we're going to need volunteers, so I'm going to remember you on that, in particular. But we're going to need a lot of volunteers. The more people that get involved in the process, the better. You know, this is not a closed-door operation, or all this. Any other questions?
Thank you, Bill, you're wonderful.
I would just ask the board, we do need you to vote on the warrant.
And get it on the warrant tonight. We will do that.
Thank you, everybody, for staying.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I make one more suggestion? This is kind of a segue from what Bill has just said.
We have you captive, we don't want you to leave.
Don't let you. We're having a forum on April 24. And we, this, how do I say this without insulting myself? Well, we need seniors to come. We need their input. We need to know what their concerns are about Waldeboro and living in Waldeboro, what their needs are. And it's going to be all-inclusive. We must have, what, 100, at least 100 people, maybe more, we hope, will be attending this forum. It's only an hour. And there's breakfast.
Yeah, there's good breakfast. Muffin, no, we do. Egg and bacon strata.
Ooh.
Or no, that was, French toast strata, and egg and bacon quiche, and veggie quiche. She pooh-poohed the hash browns. Yeah, we could do mimosas.
That wasn't on the list.
But it's really important, and if you're interested in attending, if you could let me know, because it's, we want to get the people we don't normally hear from, and a lot of you I haven't seen a lot of. So I would really appreciate if you wouldn't mind coming, or just calling me and letting me know you'd like to come, and I can send you an invitation, because it's really important that we get a cross-section of town. And as much as I love all of my people on committees, I get tired of the same, I hear the same thing all the time, and I'm getting, I need the people who don't normally say anything, I need you to speak. Because a lot of times, we take your silence as you like what we're doing, and maybe you don't, maybe you just don't want to say anything. But we need to figure out how to move forward in this town, because we have serious issues, and it's for serious people. And we need to know how to make this town better, for our seniors, for our children, for everybody.
Where is it going to be and what time?
BFW, 7:30 we start on the 24th of April.
Right. And you just can't, if you could, just let me know you're coming, so we know how much food to have, but I really need you to call me or stop in and let me know that you're interested in coming. Sorry, it's already kind of cast in stone, a lot of moving parts to this.
You did register to vote today, though, so we know you're here, and we might follow through with some contacts to see if you're, you can be gaiety over to attend the meeting.
You need home fries, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thanks, Max.
Home fries, gold, everything. Hash brown, gold, everything.
Too many carbs if you have potatoes and french toast.
They'll enjoy something before they die. Why can't they have that?
What do you mean, they?
You're invited to it too. You're going to be there. Do you want home fries?
Yes.
Okay, can I have your name? And you want home fries, right?
I'm older than all of you here.
What is your name?
OJ Duff.
Oh, you belong to her. 60 years.
Wow, that's awesome.
God bless you.
Picking her out for the week. I've got to write it down when I get home.
Tell him what he needs to say.
I'll send you an invitation.
Tell him what he needs to say.
At 7:30 in the morning, right? Half the day is done by then.
I know.
At a certain age, you can't sleep.
I don't sleep now, I need about four hours, it all goes. Even when I'm with my Russian. Oh, I got another bottle here.
Yes, you do.
Can I have your name?
David Tenney. I'm from New Jersey, as you might know.
How can you tell?
He has, he has the, he has the same accent as I do.
He doesn't have big hair, though, that's how I can tell.
Oh.
I go to the barber in Waldeboro.
Davis, what's your address?
What's that?
What's your address?
670 Fort French. That's the thing about what old people are going to be doing. I heard the other day on the radio, at least 30% of all the houses, so old people, homes will be gone within a certain period of time.
We have an acute...
And that is a huge problem.
The houses will be gone?
Well, they'll be sold.
Oh, okay.
Have to be moved out of the house, just to go to someplace.
Oh, oh, okay, got it, the houses will be...
I always think of that place up by the old chemical plant, not plant, but the light torch. Silvania, right. Scourge us to be that, that is taken care of already, the Silvania people own that area, it's a huge investment.
It's going to take a thousand years to clean that up. It's going to take a thousand years.
Could be done.
We do have a committee working on what can be done.
That's why we need you to come to that meeting.
Come to this meeting, yes.
I had an idea.
Driving home one day from Rockport, I came up with an idea, turned on the corner there, and it's like, those little sheds and stuff, we had to do this little house there.
Well, you can't use it for residential purposes, that's our issue, but, but I do think that you're...
My point is, that came together in my mind as I drove past...
Aging in place, though, is going to be a topic.
And the sun was setting, and I was thinking of elderly people that need a little place.
A little place, yeah.
And so on.
Lots of...
And it might be one of those TIF things. Is that TIF, how do you spell that?
Tip.
Tip.
It's TIF, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I think I'm a medical therapist. When they had the people come in, I had an idea that went through my brain.
Shall we move on?
Move on.
I need sugar. Sweet enough. Public hearing. I'll open a public hearing, liquor license renewal for Gary Seehall, DVA captain's fresh idea, do I have a motion to open a public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is open. Public hearing.
No complaints.
Is there any public comment? John?
Yes, I just want to follow through with my desire to try and get that ordinance.
Oh, sorry, we're on a different topic here.
For a liquor license.
Sorry, sorry.
I wasn't listening.
It's all right.
I apologize.
Put it through.
This is...
Put it through.
Do we have any?
Many for you.
We have no objections for them.
No objections from the police department, no.
I'll close the public hearing, all in favor of closing the public hearing? So moved. Close. Act on the liquor license renewal for Gary Seehall, DVA captain's fresh idea, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Jan is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All set. We've adjusted the agenda already. Citizens' comments.
May I speak about what I tried?
The lecture.
All right, so...
No, you have to go to the lecture.
Please, John.
Else you're not heard on the team.
John Lawrence, Donald Waldeboro.
John Lawrence, town of Waldorough. I'm here to ask that we get some kind of a special understanding about trying to get a moratorium done for registered caregiver activities in this town, so that we can get that put together as quickly as possible and get it in place to create the moratorium we need for writing ordinances, or the ordinance required to regulate registered caregivers.
Okay.
So I'm hoping we can do that within two meetings. And I would be glad to volunteer to help in writing the language with the town planner and researching anything I needed to do to help that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further citizen comments? Select Board comments? Just to apologize for Clint Collamore, he could not attend tonight's meeting. His back is killing him, he's having surgery on Thursday. He can barely sit down. It's terrible, so he sends his apologies, and we hope, we wish him a speedy recovery. Town manager's report.
So.
I'm sorry, Jan.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right. I was at a Lincoln County meeting last week, I think it was, and I got an email a few days later. It said, it was good seeing you at the meeting. I was very interested in what was said concerning broadband development in local communities. Is Waldorough taking any initiative in this area? I would like to hear about it. So I was pleased that I could write back and said, I'm proud to say that Waldorough has been a leader in this area. We were awarded a grant a few years ago to install fiber of ILCI throughout town, where we couldn't get fiber, and I, I hope I was right here, we worked a spectrum, you know, to get connectivity to other parts of town. There are still a few spots we're working on. Our broadband committee morphed into the Communication and Technology Committee. The committee started as a subcommittee of economic development and became its own autonomous committee. Check our website under committees to see who is presently on it. They can fill you in on details. So I was very pleased, and, and it was, they were talking about other communities in Lincoln County and how they were starting to get fiber and broadband. And I sat there with my smug look, but then when I got a note from one of our residents, I was really pleased to be able to say that we're on the leading edge on that one. So that was nice. And also, there is, there's some renewed interest in solar through our own Dana Dow. And they're having, Waldorough is having on April 16th, at, I believe it's the high school.
Yep.
They're having a large meeting.
Six o'clock.
Where they are going to have four, and I wrote it down, the four speakers, and they were really some interesting speakers. I think Seth Berry was one. I can't remember what his role is specifically.
Dana, one of the head of the Kennebunk electric utility.
Right, Kennebunk Electric, right?
Yep.
And the, a director of the Office of Energy for the state is one.
Yep.
And anyway, there are four of them, and I just thought that that spoke well for Waldorough. It's open to the public, and it's, what is the time, six?
Six to eight.
Something like that, yeah.
Six PM to eight PM.
Right, at Madomic Valley High School, school vacation.
John?
Yeah, thanks for your comments on the broadband part of it, which I've been involved in.
I know.
Sitting in on the meetings that are ongoing right now in the county that involve contiguous bordered towns. Because we have opportunities to join up with them, to expand the network, to help them at the same time we help ourselves.
Help us, yeah.
And I'm trying to sit in without adding, but I'm, there are people that I've been on the internet working with ideas with them, to try and enhance our fringe area.
Oh, great.
And we have areas that are not covered properly that need to be looked upon.
Well, that's good. It can all work together. We all do better when we all do better.
Right. Thank you.
I just have one thing to add to my written report. This morning, we had a good meeting with the Madomic project. For those of you who don't know, it was an initiative started in 2013. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that we received our Madomic River Water Quality Project. And I wanted to publicly thank Phil Garwood from the DEP. I think, Abden, you would agree, that he was a moving force behind getting the Madomic Task Force off the ground. And it was a great meeting. We had a lot of people from the DEP, DMR, this morning here, talking about the river quality and, and where we've progressed. And it was an interesting, it was kind of, I think, the passing of the baton in a way, maybe. You had Phil, who's retiring from the project. We had a represent, two representatives from the Mid Coast Conservancy, which is now, who's sort of taken over for the MVLT, who were the stewards along with the Shellfish Committee. The two stalwarts are, of course, Glenn Melvin and Abden Simmons, who are the senior members now of the team. But Mary Ellen from the DEP is retiring, so we have her replacement there. But it was neat to have, you could actually see the younger generation now stepping up with the Mid Coast Conservancy and with, oh, from FB Environmental, Maggie from FB Environmental, who's been helping us with the watershed-based plan. So there's a nice, good generational pass, passing of the baton, and it was, I think it, it's a good thing. Gabby Hillier, we're also pleased to announce that Gabby will be with us for another year.
Agreed.
She is per, serving her doctor, doctorate degree. So we will have her for at least another year, maybe two. So there's exciting things happening on the Madomic. And I just, this will be put on the website.
I thought was my question, as a PDF?
As a, as a PDF that you can download, but it has all of our testing results. I wish it had more of Gabby's work in it. We're excited about Gabby's work. She's the one who's been working with how the river actually moves. And she's going to be an integral part of our seeding project that was Abden's brain trial. So we're going to put baby clams in great places. Kind of cool. That's it.
Thank you. No questions at this point? Okay. Consent calendar, I apologize, the minutes weren't ready for tonight's meeting, so get them in next time, unless you want to act on them tonight.
We got them right in.
I don't read them.
Want to act on them tonight?
I think so.
If you haven't had a chance to read them, we can always delay them until next meeting.
I don't know, I haven't read them. I usually trust them.
Let's delay it until the next meeting, so.
The only other thing I have, too, is I have to add some quick claim claims. Oh, sorry. The sixty gross neck would be a quick claim deed that has to be added. Ten thirteen gross.
Okay, okay, yeah. Sixty gross neck?
Yep, ten thirteen gross neck road. And then a discharge of mortgage for Michael Rogers.
Rogers discharge. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion on the consent calendar with the elimination of the minutes pending the next meeting, and the addition of sixty gross neck, ten thirteen gross neck, and the Rogers mortgage discharge. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.